Welcome to the Town of Emmitsburg Town Meeting for August 6, 2018. At this time, I'll ask folks in the room to please silence their phones or turn their phones off in respect to decorum for the meeting. That would be appreciated. And now I ask we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. We'll start with our future meetings and then we'll invite our elected guest to visit. All right, moving from there, here we go. The Parks and Recreation Committee will meet on Tuesday, August 21st. The last day to register to vote in town, it will occur on Monday, August 27th. The last day to file for election for the two commissioner seats which are open is also on August 27th, that Monday. That closes at 4:00 PM before the end of business for the town office. Our next council meeting will occur on Tuesday, September 4th, here at 7:30 PM. As is our tradition when we do have somebody who's elected in office visiting, we invite them to come forward. We have Mr. Roger Wilson, Alderman from Frederick City, and also concurrently Representative of the County Executive. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Commissioners, the Mayor. Good to see you all. It's good to be in Emmitsburg tonight. My name is Roger Wilson. I am the Director of Government Affairs and Public Policy for Frederick County, and also I am an elected official as an Alderman down in the city of Frederick. I wanted to come up and just address the town. Probably won't be back for your next meeting, but school is getting ready to open again after Labor Day, and I just wanted to wish this town well and, you know, bringing our kids back safely and welcoming them into the classroom again. Also, here at Emmitsburg, we have a great college, Mount St. Mary's, and welcoming those students into this community and also into Frederick County. And something that we have to always be aware of, that we represent, we represent the county, and they're very important to us. And for those students that are coming into Mount St. Mary's, we want to encourage them, once they graduate, to stay here, okay? And be a part of Frederick County, live and work. Also, one other thing that I wanted to just remind the towny, the townwise, is that just check on your neighbor. We're dealing with some crazy weather. I don't know if you've noticed, but it's hot one day and it's raining the next, but check on your neighbor and especially the elderly in the county. So, that's all I had. The County Executive wishes you well. If you had any questions that I could take back to her, I can take them at this time.
Great, thank you, sir. Any questions for the Executive's representative? No, none at this time? Okay.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Wilson, thank you very much.
Took it easy on me, all right.
Yeah, yeah, right, right. It's August, you're good, sir. Okay, moving forward, we now turn to the minutes from the July 9th, 2018 meeting. Are there any changes, enhancements, modifications that anyone would like to see? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented for the July 9th meeting.
Very good. Is there a second for the motion made by Commissioner Buckman?
Oh, sorry. I'll second the motion.
Okay, the motion's been made by Commissioner Buckman, it's been seconded by Commissioner Blanchard. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody against? The motion carries five to zero, thank you, folks. Okay, moving forward, we turn to the police report.
If you recall, at the last meeting, they had mentioned that they would not be at this meeting, so we won't have a police report, they'll double up in September.
Very good, okay, thank you. We now turn to the Town Manager for the Manager's Report.
Good evening, this is the Manager's Report for June of 2018. I'll just highlight some of the key areas. Related to the streets, staff made some streetlight repairs and several parking meter repairs, as well as conducted their monthly street sweeping. Related to the sidewalk and bridge project, staff assisted the contractor with installing some streetlights, parking meters, and the kiosk around the square, and staff also fixed the time on the new clock. Related to the parks, continued monthly maintenance checks on all the equipment, the roads, the ballfields in each park. Staff had to hire a contractor to make repairs at the community park restroom due to some vandalism. Some new signs were put up at the pool. Related to the water, Rainbow Lake is currently at the spillway level of 16.6 feet. During the month of June, we produced an average of 252,679,000 gallons, or gallons per day. We purchased 419,550 gallons of water from the mount this month. Related to wastewater, we received 9.65 inches of precipitation in the month of June. The average is 5.62, leaving us a surplus of 9.08 inches over the last six months. Continuing with wastewater, we treated an average of 942,000 gallons per day and consumed only 232,920 gallons per day, which means that 75.3% of the wastewater treated in the month of June was wastewater. I had a note from Mr. Fissell that actually, three days in the month of June, we pushed through the pump 10, or through the pumping station, 10,456 gallons per day. We had no spills of untreated sewage in the month of June, however, we did exceed the design capacity eight times in the month of June. The monthly trash pickup will remain on, remain Mondays in the month of August. As usual, I highlighted some of the meetings that I attended. I have some noteworthy things that didn't make it in the packet that I'd just like to bring to your attention. The second phase of the riprap at Rainbow Lake was completed at the end of June. It looks outstanding. Next month, or next year, excuse me, we'll do the final phase. We had the, on July 13th, we had the final walk-through, the town walk-through with the state highway and the contractor on the sidewalk project. We had two, or one sanitary overflow, which was June 4th. MDE was notified. It was, we received 2.4 inches in a very short time, in about 20 minutes, and we just couldn't keep up. The overflow lasted for about three and a half hours and was estimated 2,000 gallons lost. We had one later in the month of June, I don't have the particulars on that one as yet, so we had two overflows in the month of, actually, it was July. And then on July 24th, the Health Department provided updates on areas affected by floodwaters and sewage overflows. Just a brief synopsis of it, the continued heavy rainfall and floodwaters have overwhelmed sewage collection systems in some areas in Frederick County. And several other waterways may also be affected by sewage, including Flat Run and Thomas Creek in Emmitsburg because the manhole in Emmett Gardens did overflow. The creek did rise, so the two did meet. So, we posted alerts on Facebook and website, just as the Health Department did, saying "Don't swim in the creek till things subside." Just to let you know, the last that I was informed is McDonald's will be starting their renovations on August 13th, and estimated time, I believe, is three weeks. So, they will be closed for three weeks. Finally, wanted to bring something to your attention as we're approaching hunting season. Numerous discussions with staff, our office manager, our public work staff, and the Mayor to address a lot of concerns that we received last year during hunting season about people hunting at Scott Road Farm. It is actually one of the, was actually one of the open areas to hunt. However, we received a lot of complaints of people trespassing, people riding their four-wheelers and three-wheelers, installing tree stands. A lot of safety concerns were brought to our attention last year. We do not allow fishing in the ponds at Scott Road Farm, so discussions with staff and the Mayor. It was decided in an effort to curb the trespassing and to enhance the safety, because the last thing we want is an accident on Scott Road Farm where the hunting. We've decided to eliminate the hunting on Scott Road Farm for this year, and then we'll reevaluate after one year. So, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. We posted notice on our Facebook and our website. I think all the discussions we've had with staff, that this is the best way to go, and like I said, we'll reevaluate after this year. And that's what I have for my Manager's Report.
Okay, are there any questions for the Manager related to the report? Yes, sir, Mr. Ritz.
I know that the, the manhole at Emmett Gardens, it didn't affect the playground. How close did the seepage come out to the playground?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know how, I don't know how high the floodwaters came.
Okay.
I don't know, we didn't have any pictures of it.
Is there anything in the works, then, to potentially, to address that situation in the future?
I don't believe there's anything that you can do to prevent that at this point. We are trying to, and you'll see in September, we're going to try to reline some sewer lines and try to find funding for a new pumping station that will help alleviate some of that, but when you get a large amount of rain like that and in the close proximity to the creek, you know, we can only try, and those are two of our options.
Well, the pumping station's going on the other side of that, isn't it?
Right, but what it does is the pumping station right now cannot keep up with the flow.
Okay.
And the basic, the problems are, one is your I&amp;I, so everything's seeping into your sewer line, particularly on East Main Street at that end of town, and so it's overflowing the pumping station, so then you start to have the backups. And the manhole is right there, so it's in close proximity. But, we're going to have a big presentation in September that's going to address most of your concerns about this. I'll have Mr. Fissell intendant as well.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for the Town Manager related to this, to her report? Just to follow up on the playground, do we know when the paving will occur to allow better access to that?
It is on the schedule, I believe the rain has just backed everybody up. We're on their schedule, it should be, I believe, this month.
Terrific, okay. I had heard from members of the Indian Lookout Conservation Club, who had provided, who asked some questions related to the Scott Road Farm hunting suspension and fishing, I guess hunting suspension. They're definitely interested in seeing hunting occur there again, and they might come forward with a proposal of sorts related to maintenance of the property. So, the conversation took place today, and I just wanted to be sure that got heard, so that relates to that one. Okay, any other questions for the Town Manager? No, okay, all right, moving forward, we turn to the Town Planner's Report.
This would have been Ms...
Go ahead, you can go.
Well, not Planning Commission, Planner.
Oh, sorry.
We're good.
Okay, this would be Ms. Hipperley's report from June. I'll just highlight some of the areas. Related to GIS, we are working to map the storm drains and the storm water management facilities that we need to maintain compliance with the MS4, the storm water permit. She processed two community legacy grant agreements for two new projects at 239 West Main and 119 North Seton. She hosted, on the Mayor's behalf, the Hosted a Frederick County Planners Quarterly Meetings. We had all the planners from Frederick County came to town, they went to lunch, they toured some of our areas. Upcoming activities, or actually, this was already completed, her final report for the MHAA grant for the square, that was related to the brick, was submitted at the end of June. Some potential projects upcoming that will involve staff reviewing, possibly the Planning Commission. We have a few rezoning request processes with input from the Town Attorney, one of one which will be coming to you in September. Complete the Brookfield-Irishtown Road Approval Renewal for that section, excuse me. It looks like everything that she had highlighted.
Great, okay. Any questions for the Town Manager related to the Planner's Report, remembering that it's not the Town Planner in, in the meeting? No, we're okay, very good. Okay, so, thank you. We now turn to Commissioner Comments. Commissioner Ritz?
Don't have an exact date yet, a little bit of, a little miscommunication, apologize for that. However, we do have a traditional Irish music band slated in the works in the near future, details to follow.
Okay.
Be a Saturday night.
Great, would this be in the park?
Yes.
Great, okay. All right, is that it, sir?
That's all I have, thank you.
Oh, very good, okay. Commissioner Buckman?
I don't have much to say right now, because, you know, it's summertime and we've all been busy recreating, but I wanted to give a shout-out to all the Getting Ahead graduates. The ceremony was tonight and it was wonderful, and we're looking forward to those people getting more involved in the town, and so congratulations to them.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Blanchard?
Okay, sure, got a couple things. First of all, just came to the pool today, wonderful, total hands-on, you know, to the staff, getting this done. So, those things that, you know, last summer when we were working on it, thought about, man, what's it like when it's 97 degrees outside? It's fantastic, so, anyway, thumbs up, okay. Attended a concert yesterday at Shrine, this was a pretty interesting show. This was a concert which the Shrine had brought in harpists from around the United States and the United Kingdom, and it was like 20 different harpists on stage. I've never seen anything quite like that before. It was outstanding, it was an incredible show, so, it just, you know, right across the street, we have some amazing music happening. This Saturday, there's a free show coming, again, right across the street at the Shrine, and that's the Frederick Symphony Orchestra that's playing across the street at the Shrine. If you've ever heard music there before, the acoustics are fantastic, totally recommend, check out the show, and that's at 7 o'clock, 7 o'clock on Saturday. Back-to-school party, I understand was wonderful, talking to my wife and kids about that, they will come back with school supplies. I know Pastor John does it every year, really appreciate that. Last week, and it was the night out with the deputies, I didn't get a chance to attend it, but I did get a chance to stop by. If you get a chance, thanks to deputies for doing that, you know, I just, I know it's a big deal, and I just kind of busy at night with everything else, but I know it's a huge thing to get organized, Matty, so appreciate that. Let's see, what else? I think that's it. Yep, okay.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sweeney?
Yes, I'd like to thank the town staff and all the hard work they've been doing all summer to try to keep up with the mowing and stuff with all the rain we've had in the parks. I know it's been a hard job to keep, try to keep up with. Also with the pool, I'm so glad that we have some high school kids trying to do their community service in our new concession stand that we have opened up. I've been stopping in periodically and checking on them, and they, I stopped in yesterday, checked on him, and he was doing a pretty good job. They're getting their community service hours, which Commissioner Buckman's been keeping track of. So, the concession stands worked out pretty well this year, I think it was a good addition to the pool with the new pool we have, and so hopefully next year, everybody will know we have a concession stand open there, and then it'll, it'll do much better in the second year of opening. Thank you.
Great, okay, thank you, sir. I was also at the back-to-school picnic for the Christ Community Church, very impressive turnout there, a lot of backpacks were handed out, a lot of kids are better prepared for the school year, very nice to see. The Mayor and I attended the pedestrian and bikeway hearing, where we spoke on behalf of the town advocating for connections with cycling and pedestrian routes from here to Thurmont and from Thurmont beyond to the canal, but also connecting us to the university. And these things were carried on, are now part of institutional memory in the now-accepted bike and pedestrian, sorry, pedestrian and bikeway comprehensive plan that went to the county, so they approved it and it moved forward. Moving from there, let's see, the, we had a mini trailwork day that went very well, our volunteer did phenomenally well, and we got a lot done, happy about that. Yesterday, or, excuse me, Sunday, yeah, yesterday, we had volunteers from a fire company up the road and from ski patrol put six hours in on the Orange Trail removing trees. Just a heck of an effort to get that done, considering the heat and humidity in the day, but it's done, so the Orange Trail is totally clear now from Annandale Road to Crystal Fountain Road to Hampton Valley Road, so one's unobstructed in their, their travels on the trail there. And beyond that, again, to echo what you said, Commissioner, the idea of so many folks in the Getting Ahead program being successful, congratulations to them, being not enabled but empowered, and that's phenomenal. So, at this time, I turn to the Mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Excuse me, thank you very much, Mr. President. Just to highlight the month, we have the Seton Center Ruin Cutting, beautiful green building, sets a pace center for everything that just carries on, our, our regional name is, is Greentown, and they've done a terrific job down there, and it was a wonderful outing. Farewell party for Father Charlie Craig, presented Father Craig with, with a town proclamation. He was a chaplain for the Fire Department, and for many years, and they said chaplains were like this, and then he was up here, he was, he went everywhere, he was just, just did a terrific job, and he's going to be missed as he moves on. Attended the Emmitsburg Planning Commission meeting, and bid farewell to Sue, and introduced Zach, our, our new Planner, to the board. Main Street Alliance presentation with the Town Manager and myself, Ms. Amy Seitz from Baltimore came over, Community Access to Main Streets, and, and we are, we're taking a serious look as the next step is becoming affiliate. It's a brand-new program, it's only about a year and a half, two years old, they didn't have this when we went into sustainable communities, but they're telling us to stay in sustainable communities, do this, and we'll, we'll study the merits of it and take some steps and see if we'll be a full-time member in, in the future, a Main Street program. Met with the President of Woodsboro Bank, Stephen Heine, he came up with Vice President Catherine Lucy Myers, and also Steve Ott from The Branch, and another gentleman, Christopher Connors, I believe his name is, they spent some time up here just to introduce himself to, to the town, very wonderful old bank, but very progressive, young staff there, it's, I really enjoyed that. Let's see, National Night Out, Liv and I served hot dogs, and I want to thank Commissioner Blanchard, I, I kind of wilted at the end with the heat, but he was kind enough to come back and, and help do the breakdown, it was very kind of Commissioner to come back from where he earned the commitments. Christ Community Church, dropped by that, it's always a success, and a wonderful tribute to Christ Community Church, the effort, and tonight, we're at the Getting Ahead graduation, a terrific program where people, people in a loving, caring setting learn the basics of what, what it is to do some basic things in the financial world, and, and they will be wonderful additions to our community, and always to our staff. Staff has been wonderful, this weather, on-call all the time, and everything looks terrific, and thank you, and to your staff. Turn back to you, sir.
Great, okay, thank you. Public comment, do we have anybody signed up for public comment at this time who would like to speak at this time? Thanks, okay, all right, Bryant Hoffman? Good evening, sir. Yeah, if, if you would, please identify yourself, tell us your home address, and then you have four minutes?
Four minutes. I'm Bryant Hoffman, I live in North Seton Avenue, I work at Stavert's Pizza, and people work to the square and stuff, they're blocking off the square every time, and we're getting, and we're losing our customers and stuff, and they gotta leave work on Mondays, they will, will say we're not there on Mondays, they need to work on Mondays, whatever day that we're going, because we're losing business, and I have a lot of customers, been, been missing and all that, and that's why we're not too much customers for all this week, because we're naturally busy. At night, we're busy, but not during the day.
Okay.
So, hopefully that works.
Great, thank you, sir. Good news, the square project is wrapping up very, very soon, hopefully by the end of this month.
I hope so, too.
So, please share that with the Dorcas family, and hopefully that will be good news.
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, I have signed up at Mr. Joseph Baldacino, if you would like to speak, yes, sir?
No.
And again, sir, I'll, I'll ask you to come to the podium. Please identify yourself and your address, and then the floor is yours for...
Okay, Joseph Baldacino, 12508 Killian Lane, Bowie, Maryland, 20715. I don't know whether, I guess mainly, I, if anybody has any questions for me about the, the reason I'm here is my parents, my, my late father had a dental office and a home in one building, and when it was built, well, he used to have a dental office and home together, 25 and 27 West Main Street, and he sold that to the fire company, and they moved down to Emmett Gardens and built a combination building around 1960. At that time, it was outside the corporate limits, and there was a big dairy farm across the street, and, but what happened was, I guess in the 70s somewhere, it got rezoned to just residential, and my father was still practicing, so it was grandfathered, but then when he retired around 1985, after six months or so, it became residential only, but he continued to live there, and we weren't trying to sell it, and so nobody paid any attention. And then when they had the, the big rezoning thing in 2015, I guess it was, or, we just weren't aware of it, my parents were old, and I, I was handling their affairs, but I lived in Bowie, so it wasn't on our radar screen, and it got rezoned to residential only, and stayed there. In the, in the meantime, the very, the building right next door, right across the side street, which had always been just residential, got rezoned commercial, because they were aware of the situation and so on. So, meantime, my father, even though he was retired, his dental office, all the stuff was, was still there until very recently, we'd been cleaning it out, and so, in the meantime, there's a, we're thinking about selling it, and there is a doctor who lives out near the mound on Annandale Road who has expressed an interest in purchasing it and putting his little doctor's office, wherever my father's dental office was, and the bedrooms in the residential part, he's interested in making them available for hospice. And so, he was, he's, we haven't discussed finance or anything like that, and if it's not rezoned, there's maybe no reason, but not so much for money or anything else, but we, we kind of like to see this doctor be able to use it, he, he loves it for his purpose. And so, we inquired about what, what you might do to see if it could be rezoned, and so they told us, get a lawyer and write something, which we did, and so recently, the Planning Commission, as I, I guess they tell you this more than I tell you, but they voted to recommend that you consider rezoning it, so they, and then Zachary told us the next step is you would have to have this meeting to simply decide whether you want to put it on the agenda, and then after that, at another meeting, you decide whether you want to go up or down with it, and if you go up with it, there would be a hearing, so, and from what Zach said, it'd be a good idea for me to try to be at all these various meetings if they take place. So, I'm here for that reason, and I'd be happy to answer any question you may have.
Terrific, okay. We'll not ask any questions at this time. Thank you for your advocacy, you definitely clarify your, your support for the position that registers with the Board. Your advice has been good regarding, there's a process that will be followed related to creating this, the agenda we haven't set for the next meeting, very likely based on the report from Planning and Zoning, the committee, it could be, it could be an agenda item for the next meeting, and I would assume that you are in favor of that. So, that way we can move forward in the process to discuss it.
Okay.
So, that's sort of where we are, I don't think I've missed any of the steps or details for the first part, so...
And if there, whenever, if there's something that I should try to attend, I guess somebody from the town would notify us, what's coming next or whatever.
Your obligation is to be aware of it.
To try to be aware of it.
Correct. We can try to have somebody from Planning and Zoning or the Town Office, we would encourage them to. It will be posted online, it will be posted on Facebook, I believe, and, well, I don't know that you would get our Channel 99 in Bowie, so I don't think that would be of much use to you.
Probably, but if I look at the town's website...
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, fine, thanks.
You'll definitely see advertising for that there.
Thanks a lot.
I hope that helps. Okay, thank you, sir. All right, that's it that we have signed up for public comment, so at this time, we now turn to Administrative Business, and we discuss the timeline of work related to the Flat Run Bridge on Main Street. So, at this time, we invite our representatives from MDOT and State Highway to come forward. And again, sir, if you'd identify yourself and your, in this case, your position and where your home office is, and we'll go from there, please.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Neil Haynes. I work for Maryland State Highway Administration. I'm the Assistant District Engineer of Construction for District Seven, which is Carroll, Frederick and Harrod County. I'm in charge of the construction program for our district. I have with me, I'd like to introduce them, is the project engineer on site, Sherry Wasselchop. I have the area engineer, who is her supervisor. And works for me, Ross Klingon. And we're all from State Highway. And our understanding was, we were invited here to talk about the progress of the work.
Yes, sir.
And then answer questions. So just to give you a little bit of a synopsis was, the intended schedule when this project was expected to go to work was in July of 2016. That notice to proceed did not occur. You know, typically, we have to sign the contract and do various administrative things. But it was finally let into October of 2016 with an estimated completion date of August 2018. Due to the delay in the signing of the documents or issuing the notice to proceed, we had to change the notice to proceed to a November completion date for 2018. Typically, when we push the dates of the anticipated notice to proceed, we try to go ahead and push the completion date. It's just a calendar for day push, except for in the wintertime, we have to account for the lack of progress that can occur in the wintertime. You know, we have a fewer number of workdays available to us. So, you know, we have to consider that. Also, by issuing a fall start date in October, it is hard for a contractor to progress the work very much because of the cold weather. A lot of our work is weather-sensitive. So when you have to pour concrete or dig or do compaction, place storm drain, you know, all those things have to occur in fair weather so that the installation process and the material conditions can be met. So also, to complicate things, when we started this project, our designers had to issue a red line revision, which modified the storm drain design, which also impacted the work and the scheduling. This red line was quite extensive. It takes time to negotiate prices to these changes. So that also impacted the job, which changed the November completion date to an April 2019 completion date. So it was quite a push. And anytime that, again, when you're backed up against the winter, the days aren't the same. The days in the summer, we have more workdays. The days in the winter are less. So we had to take it to the spring. So once we, we also, as the contractor started doing the work and removing the bridge and during the demo, there were some concerns that he brought to our attention concerning the foundations of the existing bridge. Those concerns was, as we were providing the supportive excavation next to the structure to start Phase One of our bridge work, we had to have that investigated by a geotechnical consultant because there was a fear that it was unsupported during the work. So that took a little bit of time to, quite a bit of time, I should say, to do an investigation and get a recommendation from that consultant. We actually had to modify and install some micro piles to help support the existing structure while we built the new structure. That pushed it from an April completion date to an August 9, 2019 completion date. Then, also concerning, and this happened last summer, there is an existing water line. And the contractor felt that he would not be able to start and work on the new bridge due to the existing water line, his excavation work necessary to do abutment B or the east abutment would expose that water line and he would have to provide temporary support. That temporary support would mean that that existing water line would be approximately eight foot out of the ground. It's a, you know, an older line. We have a fear that just trying to support it, that it may get bumped, damaged, and just trying to support it and work around it is just something not feasible. We discussed that with the contractor. We tried to, you know, manage it with the contract, but ultimately, the decision was made to work with the town to get the water line relocated, redesigned, and so on. That also took time. Now, the impacts to the time regarding the water line issue, because it did delay work, we have not negotiated fully. We have the cost where the work is done. But the impacts to the schedule and what we are agreeing to has not been determined yet. So currently, we're hoping, though, once those negotiations are complete, the job will be completed late fall 2019. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them or one of my staff. That, in a nutshell, is the events that occurred on the project.
Okay. Mr. Sweeney, anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Mr. Ritz, anything?
I, I do have one.
Sure, Mr. Sweeney, coming back to you.
Will the first phase of it be completed by this year? You mean the one side of the bridge?
We're certainly pushing for that.
Our contractor's schedule.
Could you, I'll ask you to come up to the microphone.
Yeah.
And again.
Introduce Ross Klingon, this area engineer.
So you know process. Identify yourself and your role and we'll go from there.
Sure, my name is Ross Klingon. I'm the State Highway Area Engineer, which means I, I'm under Neill and I supervise a number of projects in Carroll, Harrod and Frederick County right now, about 20 jobs. The bridge job is one of my jobs.
Okay.
At our last two progress meetings that we have monthly with the contractor, they've expressed that they intend to have Phase One completed by this fall and traffic running in two lanes on the new structure while we tear down the second phase and construct the rest of the bridge. That's weather permitting, but I think, I think there's a very good chance that we can get that done this year. Sure.
So just for absolute clarity.
Sure.
I think I misheard what you said.
No, go ahead.
Could you repeat, related to new structure versus tear down of old structure timelines?
Yes, the, we anticipate Phase One of the new structure to be completed by this fall. And then traffic will be running in two lanes on the new structure while we tear down the remainder of the old structure.
Terrific. As part of traffic running across that, will pedestrian traffic also be allowed? Or will the temporary?
The temporary bridge will stay in place, yes, for the pedestrian traffic.
Okay, terrific, all right. Mr. Sweeney, does that answer your question? Okay. Mr. Ritz, coming to you, sir.
Um.
Thank you.
I guess the general consensus, you know, from what I hear, I, I don't, I live here in town. My full-time job's in Frederick, so I'm not here during the day during the week. But I hear a lot of people say, you know, they see the bridge, they don't see any work getting done. They don't see any workers around.
Right.
So my question to you, just, just to throw it out there, do you, are there any issues with the contractor at all?
Well.
Let me, before you answer it, I'll, I'll go ahead. Because what I did, I did some research to see like what other projects they have open. And I noticed that they do have four recent ones with Maryland Highway Administration. And it seemed that those projects were also spaced out, not completed when they were expected to be completed. I know things happen.
Mm-hmm.
But I didn't know if it was a common variable there with said contractor.
Well, if I could, you know.
Sure.
We, we deal with schedules, we deal with work, and we, we deal with time available. You know, to characterize the, the workmanship of the contractor, you know, it's, it's just really not our place. It's the end result that we're looking for. So, you know, we work them, with them as best we can, negotiate these changes and so on. You've seen a lack of progress. We understand that. And I've tried to outline a little bit where those impacts occurred.
Okay.
You know, it is his means and methods, you know, to get those results. And for me to try and characterize it, it just wouldn't be fair to him. He's not here to represent himself or.
True, true. Well, thank you for your explanation tonight. That's, that's very helpful. And when you go to the website, I can't find that information, that detailed information that you gave tonight. So I guess if anyone has a concern, they just call up and they would get that information from somebody. Is it?
We have a community liaison.
Okay.
And we also have a website that is updated monthly. Sherry provides us with comments of the work that's progressed for the past month and then a somewhat brief synopsis of what is expected the following month.
It must be a separate website than I, than what I found. Is, is it a different website than, a different page?
Well, we call it, the PC. Go ahead, Ross, please.
Sorry, it's on the Maryland Roads. It, it has the, the active jobs. It's an interactive map and it has a list of jobs. Not every job in the state is on there, but the, the Flat Run Bridge is on there. So there are different tabs to look for things. I haven't looked at the webpage for a while, so I'm not sure all the information's there. But that kind of detailed information about the various problems is not generally put on there because it, it's more of a general synopsis for people who are looking at the job and interested in it. If they want more additional information, then they can contact the district office in Frederick and we'll try and provide that to them.
Okay.
Could you provide a link to town staff so we can get that clarified on our, on our website?
Sure.
So, well, not to the point where Commissioner Ritz, who's a competent soul, can find it easily. And therefore, if, if we have it better listed, I think.
I did find said website.
It's not.
It's got each project, it's got a schedule, it does have a map.
It does.
But it did not have any of the detail that Mr. Haynes provided.
Well, no, it's, it's generally, that kind of detail is generally not on there.
Okay.
Is it possible to get that information also listed on there? I mean, the.
May I interject?
Sure, absolutely.
Town staff and I have already discussed what we're going to do is take a snippet from this meeting and put it up on Facebook and on YouTube. And we've put it out there that for anybody that wants an information related to the project, it will be there come Wednesday.
Perfect, thank you.
And that's the best, you know, we have the link already up there. And like he said, it's not as detailed as what they provided tonight.
Sure. Much of what we're encountering is observational from our own observations and from members of the community. And some of it's anecdotal and some of it's factual. And what we're hoping to get from you guys is something definitive. And, and you're bringing that forward and that's appreciated. And the timeline is certainly helpful. But what is also occurring, and granted, you can't speak to the contractor's staff, when the staff goes to a, a shop and they say, "We don't have enough people on the job today. We're not working." That's disturbing and that's distressing. And, you know, it's like the retail adage. If you have a good experience in a store, you tell a friend. If you have a bad experience in a store, you tell all your friends. And, and that's what's traveling.
Right.
And it's moving like wildfire. And it's creating a concern. And on our end, we're trying to basically say, "We're looking for the facts. We want to have the facts in hand." And, and that's why it's appreciated you came in for clarification. So in a perfect world scenario, by the end of this fall, we'll have a new structure accessible to motor traffic. And by late fall 2019, we will see the former structure gone and sidewalks available to pedestrians. Is that fair or no?
By this fall, you will have the first phase of the new structure completed with traffic running on it. And then by next fall, the entire bridge and roadway improvements should be completed as their current schedule.
Okay.
Unless something else intervenes in the meantime.
Any traffic light signalization or anything related to the bridge while this occurs? Like any temporary?
No.
Okay.
I mean, traffic shifts a little bit, but the signalization stays in place.
Terrific, okay, all right. Commissioner, yes?
A citizen just wanted me to ask, those metal plates, I know you refer to them by a different name, but that's, are on the bridge now. They're concerned come winter, they're going to still be there and it's going to probably cause some problems.
They, they will be there come winter, but traffic should be traveling on the new portion of the road and they won't be traveling on those plates.
Okay.
Great, okay.
According to state law, after November 1st, they have to have them below grade anyways because of snow plowing, if they were active within the mainstream of traffic. So.
Just, and just one more question. Has there been any discussion that, let's say there is a delay with Phase One being completed this fall, has there been any discussion that, okay, deadlines aren't, consistently aren't being met, would you pursue a similar situation that occurred in Woodsboro where another contractor was set out for bid again and another contractor was awarded that bid and then the bridge was completed?
I know the project you're referring to, and actually, that was a, we terminated that contractor for the convenience of the state, but it was a long and drawn-out process that involved our lawyers. And I don't think it would be any benefit here.
Okay.
The contractor is progressing. A lot of the, the lack of work was while we were trying to come to terms with the water line, get it relocated. Once we had an MOU with the town and we had a design for the water line, the Maloney did work and got the water line in fairly fast. And I think the town is satisfied with the work they did. And they immediately went into the excavation and installation of their supportive excavation for the other abutment. And they were working, maybe not every day, but they were working until this recent inclement weather and rain. And I, I anticipate they will be back in as soon as it dries out to continue working so they can get the structure done. If they don't meet our schedule, the state can and will assess liquidated damages on a per-day basis to the contractor. And so they don't want that to happen.
No, I, I, thank you very much for coming in tonight. I'm, I actually am the individual that brought it up last meeting. So I'm glad they, they, staff reached out to you and brought you guys in. And now I have some information to share with everyone every time I go to the grocery store here in town, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I could, just to follow up with, with the contractor, you know, all the issues that he's dealt with, plus the weather, plus managing these crews and things like that, you know, means and methods are up to them. You know, it, it's easiest for us to have an opinion or be critical, but it's important that we do talk to the appropriate people. And in talking to a workman on the job, you know, and, and, you know, somebody who lives in the area may not be the best way to get their information for whatever reason. And, you know, I, we're trying to get all these issues resolved as fast as we can. And, you know, and hopefully, you know, if the weather would change from rain to sun, you know, you would probably see a lot more progress out there. We're dealing with this statewide. You know, we've had major storms many times, you know, thousand-year storms occurred twice in Ellicott City and so on. You, you all well aware whether you reported on it. So, yeah, we're, we're hoping for fairer weather. And to get this portion of the bridge done, you know, we have to maintain our stream flow there. And that was the reason why I bring it up. You know, every time there's a rain event, there's typically maintenance or a little bit of rework that needs to be done on the maintenance of the stream and so on. We have to wait till the soil dries or we have to wait till it's dried up enough to go in and do the supportive excavation. So it's just not a matter of one day's rain. It's a matter of how long did that one day's rain affect all the work? So we're, we're working diligent with the contractor. Ross and Sherry, you know, they're staying on top of it, you know, and it's just a lot of hands in the pot. Takes a little bit of time to negotiate and work these things through. But we're, we're moving forward. All right.
Great, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you all for coming in. It's appreciated. And we look forward to talking to you guys again when it's done at the party. So we'll see you then. Okay, moving forward. Mr. Ritz? Mr. Ritz?
Yes?
We're good?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, very good. No, no, I want to make sure.
I was just getting ready for the next topic.
Sure, sure. Okay, so we turn from administrative business with State Highway. Now we turn to, just stating, there is no consent agenda item. We now turn to the treasurer's report. Mr. Blanchard?
Yes, Mr. President. Treasury Report, Town of Emmitsburg Cash Activity as of July 24, 2018. Cash balance, July 1, 2018, $5,072,638,000. Operating balance forward, $5,249,079,000. Yes, $79,000, sorry.
Great. Any questions for Commissioner Blanchard related to the treasurer's report? Or staff, for that matter?
I have one.
Sir?
The first line item to the Daughters of Charity.
It's related to the construction of the Seton Village. Back when that was being built, there was a community block development grant, but the parameters of the grant was the town was the pass-through. the parameters of the grant was the town was the pass through. So it was, predates me, but my understanding of it was that we, all the money facilitated through the town to Seton Village. And a part of that, as you'll see, there was a security, or security kind of deposit, shall we say, of the 211,000. Once certain things were met, then we would slowly send the money back to them. So they're getting the 24,599. The town didn't spend any money on this project, we were just simply the pass through.
Okay. So that was the first one, I don't remember seeing this before, but maybe.
No, and, and I believe it was like a five-year term. And then maybe that's what the dates are starting to come through. Because I started in 2013 and it had already, the paperwork had already been processed.
Okay.
Great, and this relates to Homes for America? That project, not to the Seton Center?
Right, Seton Village.
Terrific, okay. Second question, or did I mishear you, sir?
I only had one, thank you.
Okay, very good. Anybody else have questions related to the report presented by the treasurer? Okay, all right, moving forward. We now turn to the planning commission report. Mr. Sweeney?
All right, I'll give a little summary. Petitioners were here and they gave a pretty good outlook, but I'll, I'll give a little bit here. The complaining commission received a request from the, from the town, the board of commissioners to review, comment, review and comment on a petition of amending the town zoning map for address 60602 East Main Street. Existing lots 10, 11, 15 and half of 12 in Embry Gardens. From R1 to B1 zoning is what was requested. We did a lot of talking and the discussion at the meeting along with the town attorney and, and our new Planning and Zoning Administrators Act, and Sue was also there for her final meeting. We went through a lot of it, uh, through this process. I was on the 2015 planning and zoning when we redid the new planning and zoning map. We did not have all the information on basis, on the, on the, on the summary that I'm giving here, we didn't, I don't think we had commissioners, we did not have all the information at the time. So we're relying on the mistake rule, which is nobody's fault or anything, it's, it's just what the, the petitioners were not notified or did not know that we were rezoning at the time because the parents weren't fully able to understand what was going on. They didn't know that we had rezoned in 2015, so they requested for amendment for a, a change. We discussed it and unanimously, uh, we, we, to send it to the board of commissioners for their approval and their comments. So that'll be coming up in September, I believe, is that correct?
Yes. I believe Zach already gave everybody a packet of information that will be beneficial to be reviewed prior to the meeting, so you kind of have some background information. So the town planner will be here as well as John Clapp to address any questions related to this topic. So, well, staff's going to propose that you add it to the agenda for the September meeting.
Anything else, sir, to add?
No.
No other business, very good, okay. So now we turn to our agenda items. And the first agenda item we discuss here, well, we've got budget transfer related to after-school clubhouse for consideration. Is there anybody representing that group here at this time?
No, but I think we can, we can explain if the staff can.
Well, I was wondering, we have an individual here who wants to advocate for a plan who is here, I was wondering if we could shuffle the deck a little bit in our agenda order and invite Mr. Dethridge forward? Okay? You have to go, very good, okay, thank you, sir. All right, so, Mr. Dethridge, we're going to move to your agenda item, so that way we can give the opportunity to speak.
The PowerPoint.
Okay.
I was going to present, but you want to go ahead?
Oh, is that better for you, or? Oh, all right.
His whole thing.
Okay.
So, probably if you let me present and then he can address any of your questions.
Sure, all right, is that, will that meet your needs?
Whatever you guys want to do.
Okay, let's do it that way then, sure, that'd be great.
So we're not doing the after-school?
We're going to, we're going to bump this forward.
Okay.
And then we're going to, we are going to address it, just not at this moment.
Okay.
Well, is there getting set up? I have reviewed and it's in your packet, I guess Mr. Dethridge's proposal for a community market garden at the Scott Road Farm. So taking his proposal into consideration and the, and the location that he's proposed, if you look on the map here as I'm waiting, here we go. Okay, so in looking at his proposed location on Scott Road Farm, and there's been a lot of questions related to the CREP program and Scott Road, staff and I felt it was best that we go ahead and maybe give a little bit of background information so better, everybody understands, you know, we all talk about the Scott Road Farm, but I don't know how many people have been out there to actually see it or to walk it or, or even familiar with it. So we wanted to do a little bit of background on it. So, looking at the Scott Road Farm, and you'll have your map here, this is a close-up of it, I also have a map on page 21, which is more, or no, 20, which is a more expanded view. Scott Road Farm, a portion of that, we have a contract with Chesapeake Wildlife Heritage. It's a 15-year term. It runs from 2009 to 2024. It was unanimously, geez, approved by the board on February 2nd, 2009. The goal of the CREP program is essentially to preserve the land for future generations and to protect the waterways and plant life. Basically, the contract requirements are that Chesapeake Wildlife returns 60 acres of the Scott Road Farm to its natural state. 45 acres are planted with warm-seasoned grasses and 15 acres of it are considered wetland, or were restored to wetlands. The town receives $40 per acre per year, so we receive about 2,400 per year. Part of the agreement or the contract stated the current farmer at the time and farmer now can continue to graze their cattle. At the time, the trails are not permitted on CREP land, but on, or possibly on other acreage. So this is an overview of the Scott Road Farm. This is Annandale Road, this is Scott Road. There is, I'm sure I can hardly see that. There's a locked gate here, so this is the, this is Scott Road. You access, you access the property here. We have a locked gate right here, it's secured. The only people permitted to be in there and utilize the gate are town staff. These fields here are all the acres of planted with warm-seasoned grasses. There's more detail of what actually each field is, if anybody was curious. These two here are for the wetlands. Here's the two duck ponds, essentially what they're called. But this is the boundary of the Scott Road Farm. Goes around like this, this is not part of it. Here's the creek that runs past it. This property is outside of it. Can't really zoomed in too much, we'll get to a better picture when we zoom into it. So on the farm, there's a farmhouse. And as you can see, this is what it looks like to date. In 20, in July of 2010, town requested occupants renting the house apartment. At the time, we rented two apartments. The first party's vacated prior to that, but in 20, 2010, the occupants renting the house were asked to vacate during the, due to the poor conditions. The town opted to seal the house for future renovations. As you can see, everything is boarded up and the back of the residence is in very dangerous condition. And it's part of the reason why there's a secured gate there. Also on the property is a barn. Due to the barn conditions, the town, with the board approval, hired an outside contractor to demolish the top level of the barn. And you can see there's a lot of debris and boards still there. The bottom level remains for the cattle. Towards and, I don't have the picture of the farm, but at the, to the, I guess to about the south of the residence, there is an area that is leased by the farmer. He's had, and I couldn't find the prior lease, I know there was somebody that rented the land prior to 2014, but what I found to date was April 2014 to March 2018, Stouter rents approximately 30 acres of cattle for grazing. He has also allowed the first level of the barn for use for cattle. It does not include the three acres west of the existing house. We receive $250 per year. His lease was just renewed April 2018 to March of 2022. So right here, this is a close-up of the property, a little bit closer. Here you have your locked gate, here's your house. Now, that's the barn, this is the house. Here's the proposed, in the proposal, they're asking for either a 25 by 25 garden or 100 foot by 100 foot. This is the proposed area. As you can see, this is kind of a wet area, there's a creek that runs through here, there's no road access. The Stouter lease, I believe is on a better map, basically runs from the base of the barn right here. This white area actually is where Stouter leases for his cattle, right there. If you see on page, on page 21, or actually on your blow-up map, it's a little bit easier to see where the Stouter lease is and where the proposed garden would be located. So reviewing the proposal, just, I highlighted some of the areas and Mr. Dethridge can speak to it more, I just kind of pulled pieces out of it. His proposal is to give interested families the opportunity to learn gardening and marketing, mainly through their own efforts. I had Miss Nail took most of these pictures for me. This is, right here, that's that wooded wet area that I had shown on the previous picture. This would be where the proposed site is. Just a kind of a close-up. Requested items for his project, like I said, a 25 by 25-foot plot in full sun or ideally 100 foot by 100 foot. They would need access to reliable water, a nearby composting area, a place to secure tools and/or materials, an indoor meeting area with refrigerator, restroom facilities as well as some various tools, rototiller, hand tools, lawn mower and a four-foot growlight. One of the things that would be necessary for this to take place would be electric. The electric out there is disconnected, it was disconnected as part of the, of the demo of the barn because it was unsafe. Concerns and questions considered, the proposed areas within the Stouter lease, the cattle pasture, we just threw in a picture of the existing grain silo. Reliable water source, there is no town water or sewer. There is a small 10-foot by 10-foot pond that is used by the cattle. The large creek is available, but it's about a half mile away. As I mentioned, the facilities, no, there's no electricity. If it is reinstalled, it would need to be upgraded. And at this time, the house is uninhabitable. It does need major reservation, or renovations that are very costly. Security, and I'm just putting these out here for questions for everybody to kind of think about. Property is currently secured by locked access gate, how do we secure the property? The buildings are in, not in good condition, the residence, the barn, as you can see, that outbuilding is not in very good shape. Accessibility, currently there's no vehicle access to the proposed garden location, a road or path would need to be constructed of some sort. And the only route to the area is through a stream which runs through that wooded area that I showed you. And then the main question is funding, because all of these things that would need to be done to get it to where it needed to be for the, to be accessible, the question would be how, how would any of this be funded? And that's what I have as far as the market garden, or my review of it. And I would turn it over to Mr. Dethridge if he wanted to come up and speak.
Sure. So I know you're going to start with a piece of cake, but, uh.
No, I just withdraw the proposal.
Well, and I certainly, and if I may add, I've been finishing, I think it's an excellent idea, I really do, I think it would be great for the community, I just.
That's not the location.
Is not the location. It would be staff's recommendation.
Can you guys suggest a different location?
I have one in mind.
Yes, sir.
Beyond the parking lot out here, that open grass area. It used to be a baseball diamond or something, but.
Like directly behind the building?
Yes, right now it just seems to be mowed.
Okay, would you consider beyond the outfield, closer toward the new walking path? Would that be, I think you'd have the full sun.
What I'm experiencing with the garden I'm doing right now.
Yes, sir.
Is the deer and groundhogs love everything I have planted, so the further I get away from human activity, the more of that I got to deal with.
Okay, so the tree line is inhibiting.
Yeah, I've been looking at satellite maps of the area for more than a year. And there are very few places that are within walking distance. What I liked about the farm was eventually there could be some livestock on it, small livestock, but that was way down the road. What I would, I wanted to know tonight was whether I could get on it and look at it. Having just seen that, there's no point in going out there, so.
Do we own?
No, the field behind us is a, is a Frederick County Public School field that we have an agreement with. I don't know, because they do come out there and do their field days and, and things of that nature. But we're certainly open to suggestions and, and anybody that would have input of a possible location, you may, you know, you may only be able to find a 25 by 25-foot to begin with, but.
I mean, a long time ago, Commissioner Joy, Commissioner Blanchard, myself came forward about the community garden that we have with the smaller plots. So I, I think you'll, I mean, I certainly like the concept. I think if you'd be willing to risk the, the gopher deer issues, it's a pretty sizable parcel of land out toward the ponds and on the backside of the last ball field. I couldn't guarantee you, you know, deer exposures and gopher, like, you know, I don't even know how we fight gophers anymore. It's like PC.
They're, they're groundhogs.
Yeah, yeah.
Most people prefer you live trap them.
Right.
The problem with that is you have to relocate them and nobody else wants them either, so.
The 22 strategy's out. The other side of it is, I think that would hit some of the marks that you're going for though, on a more sizable area to grow. I suspect it might be hydrophilic soil, so you might find that it's a little bit less friendly to tilling. But if you were to add, I, well, again, if you have these relations with the farmers that you've been discussing in your proposal, I think you could amend the soil with what they're bringing forward and I think you might be able to have a fighting chance. Now, would you consider a pilot program on a smaller scale with the hope of expanding it over time? Would that be worth your effort?
That was my plan to begin with, is just for me to start out on my own, to see whether I can get anything going.
Right.
And then if it does look workable, I leave it up to the town to figure out the rest of it, because I'm not much one for organizing anything, they're just.
Okay, okay, sure, sure.
I know it's a community garden and we've talked about it for years and I love the idea, I'm behind you 100%. Does it have to be a town property or can a farmer allow you to use part of his property? Or someone who has property in town?
I've been over this with numerous landowners in the area. The liability scares them to no end, which is, me and my family welcomed me on, one farmer told me, "I'll give you an acre, literally give me an acre." I wanted to buy it, he says, "No, it's more trouble than it's worth to break it off and sell it to you, I'll give it to you." I said, "Can I bring?" "No." And that's to every one of them I've spoken to, no. You're, you and your family, nobody else.
Right, right.
And when I asked why, they said, "We're afraid of getting sued."
It's liability, sure, absolutely, it's a monster. Mr. Mayor?
I'll say something later on about.
Sure, okay. I think for the size that you're looking for and the opportunity to expand the operation, number one, what you're proposing is valuable, I mean, I definitely stand behind the concept. The Scott Road, so many layers are working against us there unfortunately. But 2024 isn't that far away, I'm hoping, you know, as the trail enthusiast. 2024, just say it with me, 2024. Okay, moving beyond that though, beyond the outfield, I think that might be the only viable on-town property that would be suitable for that, where you'd have parking, access to water, you'd have some connectivity to that, well, you definitely have connectivity to downtown. You know, deer exposures, that's an investment, you know, the, the tall fencing.
There's ways of dealing with them.
Correct. Gophers, I think that's just, you know, the nature of the game unfortunately. But I look at what's gone on down in Walkerville and the success they've had with their community gardens. What they've done is they've combined their compost site with their community gardens and I think there's a, a nice symbiotic piece there. But it could be done, but it's just a question of the will to do it. And the, the sad part is, I've learned from personal experience, is whether you care for the organization piece or not, you would be the one who would very likely be driving the bus, so to speak.
I've been told that.
And that's, that's one of the realities of our, our community is that, you know, someone comes forward with a great idea, they're the one who's going to champion it. So, and this is a great idea. So I don't want to discourage you on that side, but.
Since I wrote this, a friend of mine died and she had a garlic farm. between Ortana, Gettysburg, and Fairfield. She also sold teas that she made, mixed herself, she had her own spices, blah, blah, blah. And that, that was where the market comes in. She was going to teach me.
Okay.
I've already been growing garlic off and on. She was going to teach me how to market it and all that stuff. I was going to have access to all the information she'd gathered in fifteen years of growing garlic, the business, just because she was going to shut that down this year or next. And she leaves a hole between pretty much the Rosemary House and Mechanicsburg and whatever's in Frederick. There's really nobody in the middle here to go to. So to me, if we can get this off the ground, the market part of it's a.
It's built in.
We've got an opportunity here.
Sure, sure.
Where our farmer's market is, you know how you enter on that road and at the left is where the market sort of sets up? What's over to the right? Because that would be an ideal place if it was a twenty-five by twenty-five or, because then you'd sell it right there.
Where's the lot?
The back half of the garden?
Like you enter, you drive into the farmer's market and all the, the markets are to the left.
Parking's to the right?
Well, is, how much room is, because I'm not visualizing it. I'm sort of, what's on?
I had to have to pull the map up and look at it. I don't think it's as big as you, as you think it is.
I have this black zone and this, what's to the right.
Do a little bit of research on that, which I certainly can and I'm willing to do. I'm not sure that that is, I'd have to talk to Amy about it and, and the planner, because I think there's some restrictions on that land, but I can't, I can't remember off the top of my head. So I will certainly look into that area.
Because that would be ideal, because then they could meet in the, you know, one of the meeting rooms in this building, in the library or whatever.
Question for town staff, obviously without Mr. Clapp here. Looking ahead, if this project were to come to fruition, do you foresee any potential liability issues that Mr. Deathridge brought forward? You know, like with the farm, the farmers not willing to have a group on their land?
Well, that's where the, the concerns started with just the, you know, the condition of the house and the barn and thing. There's always liability. I had not run it by John Clapp yet, because we were at the, the beginning stages of it. It certainly would be a question for him. You know, when people are in our park and they're participating in our park, our insurance covers that because they're participating in our park. Now, would that extend to a community market garden? I don't know. I don't know if we'd have to have additional insurance. Those would be questions for John.
You're thinking along the lines of, like, personal recreation versus a commercial enterprise?
Foreseeable roadblocks.
Sure, sure, yeah.
Which are unfortunate, but.
Every community garden I've looked into has a liability insurance policy, paid for by the people who use the garden.
Okay.
It's every one of them I've ever looked at. Everybody I've ever talked to that's been involved in one says part of the fee to join it covers their liability.
Liability piece, okay.
Which makes sense.
And what one does with one, with one's, you know, product, one's crop, you know, I think that's not for the, you know, the municipality to determine. I don't think we can say that if you grow something successfully, you know, you're limited because you've grown it on public land, but again, that's something we need to find out, I would imagine.
If there's any restrictions on what you can grow?
Correct. Well, well, of course, yeah.
Yeah, I've already had some suggestions for that and I threw those seeds away a long time ago.
Oh, Canada. Okay, moving forward from the maple leaf up north. So it, it looks like the, the Scott Road at this point in time, based on the leasing and the use with the CREP programs and the existing ag use, that would be out of bounds at the moment. We have options here in town potentially. It would require more research by staff to investigate the liability piece and certainly the commercial slash recreational piece. So I think that's where we are at the moment. So it's not a dead entity. I think it, it has value and I know that, you know, you, you have support on the board in part, so.
Do we have to like give staff direction or anything?
Staff, do you feel a need for direction related to furthering research on this item? Would that make it better for you?
Depends what you want. I mean, do you want me to bring something back? If you want me to bring something back, then yes.
Okay, so yes, we do need a motion. I think what we would need to bring back is the discussion with the town attorney related to the liability concerns and. Proposed location, I think that's, that's secondary more toward like land use, although the, well, no, I'm sorry. You know what? In talking about that parking area for the, for the farmer's market, if there is, if there is some easement or some obligation we have on that, we would need to know about that. So to that end, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
We don't own an L, I think you're talking like an L shape.
Yeah, I don't think.
We don't own that. The other houses own that and.
I just think the rectangle is what Commissioner.
All we have is a rectangle.
Okay. And isn't that what you just have that rectangle or a portion of the rectangle?
Because people, when they're using the farmer's market, they really just drive to the left. They don't, not really park in there.
Okay, so is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, go ahead. Yes, sir.
Just quickly, if I, two minutes on history.
Understood.
This property with thirty, some other properties were owned by Ski Liberty. You may have remembered that contest back in mid-eighties, the, the fight between, are they going to put that on the northern slope here? And, and they lost. I represented a company, a conservation company, fund, a conservation fund who bought this property from Ski Liberty and about, I put it under contract in nineteen ninety-nine. It's five hundred thirty to fifty acres, a hundred and forty down here. There is an easement on, underneath this with the Gatocton Land Trust and Maryland Environmental Trust, and we have these overlay leases here. Now, we are running, they didn't have any problem with their last inspection with you putting your trails in up there. So I don't think they'll have any problem with farm-related use down here, but you got to remember there is a perpetual lease down here, perpetuity. And these little things are on top, they're overlays, but, but the, the property costs two million dollars. The deal was almost dead because there wasn't a state park around here, and I asked them if we could go to the town. And they agreed if the town would accept the hundred, the five hundred and fifty acres, and they did. Dr. Carr and Dave Howard were there and went through the board at that time. So it was a two million dollar gift to the town, but there are other things going on here and that the board really needs to get up to speed. We have to get permission, their inspections and all kinds of things. But I, I don't see the use would be a problem. It's farm-related and what we did, the thing is, how do you get the money, electricity, the water and all that stuff together? And there may be grants or maybe other ways to do it. And it'd be, you know, it's farming. It's good stuff. Thank you. It's just that history, that there are easements on here in perpetuity.
If you, you just mentioned that to bring the board up to speed, can we be brought up to speed then?
On this?
On, on everything else that's going on with that property.
Okay, right now it's, it's sitting there and.
Not right now, but if there's other things going on that.
I don't, I, I think you think activity, I think he means legal contractual obligations, like easements. Not like there's going to be a helipad there.
Well, no, 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 I'm not, I'm not, no, I'm not saying that. It, it just sounded like there's, Mr. Mayor said to bring the board up to speed. It sounds like there's other things that we don't know.
No, this just goes back and it was given to the town, the town accepted it under these terms. We'll take your two million dollar gift of five hundred and fifty acres.
Okay.
But you have a perpetual easement on here that needs to be read and studied and they come up and visit it. And then, then we have an overlay easement with these, they're not in perpetuity, the CREP easements, but there's a lot of people looking at this all the time.
So when the CREP program expires in twenty twenty-four, it's not necessarily a given that we can do whatever we want with the Scott Road farm?
Correct.
Right. They're, they're really kind of looking at, they're kind of looking at housing development and stuff like that. They don't want that stuff, but it's the last thing I want back. I agree. We've thought that before.
It's limited in that it cannot be developed in that way.
We need to read the whole thing.
Okay, okay, all right, all right.
They, they don't, we've talked about how we want to connect the, your trail through town and bring it in there, but, you know, it's just, it just, I want you to be aware. There is a lease on this. We got a wonderful gift. We have water. All the water rights went with the whole mountain for the town and spectacular gift. And Doc, Doc Carr almost fell over when I asked him that. Would you like five hundred and fifty acres free to the town? And they're like, thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's all. Nothing's going on. The up, the speed is just the history, going back to Ski Liberty owned it and getting that developed. That could have broke, been broken up into thirty, forty houses up there and that's prohibited.
Okay.
Wonderful escape.
Baseball field. So, behind the baseball field. Okay, moving forward, so staff is waiting for a motion related to direction regarding a conversation with our attorney, Mr. Clapp. And staff is waiting for direction related to understanding the uses of the parking area connected to the farmer's market. So I would suggest two motions. I turn to staff, is there anything else that you would want us to specify? For clarity on, clarity on your part? Okay. And do you feel that gives you enough direction?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that town staff be directed to talk to Mr. Clapp about liability issues related to a community farm garden. Market garden.
Great, okay. Is there a second for the motion made by Commissioner Blanchard? Buckman, pardon me.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion's been made by Commissioner Buckman. It's been seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? The motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Sweeney now absent.
And I'd like to also make a motion, or I would like to make a motion, that staff, town staff look into the right half of the farmer's market property as a potential location for the community market garden.
Okay. If we could clarify right half, could we just say perhaps property?
Property.
Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay. Staff, does that work on your end? Very good. Okay, thank you. The motion's been made by Commissioner Buckman. It's been, is there a second for the motion? I'm sorry.
I'll second the motion.
The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Blanchard. Got it right this time. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Sweeney absent. Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good job.
So we now turn to agenda item number one, related to budget transfer to the after-school clubhouse for consideration.
Right, correct. Town staff is recommending that ten thousand dollars be transferred from Department Ten in Legislative to Department Sixty Parks within the fiscal year nineteen general fund budget. As you know, the mayor and staff and other commissioners have been working with Boys and Girls Club. Boys and Club, Girls Club submitted for a grant to come to Emmitsburg. They did not receive their funding. On the basis that they would receive their funding, the town's portion of that program was ten thousand dollars. We allocated ten thousand dollars in Department Ten Legislative account sixty-nine oh one, special events and program cost, which was designated for the Boys and Girls Club. If so approved by your, by the Board of Commissioners, the following items would change. As I mentioned, the Department Ten would be reduced by ten thousand and moved over to Department Sixty to allow the after-school clubhouse to run again for another year. I got agreements from both their staff that they would return for another year. So we're looking to transfer, transfer eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars into Department Sixty Parks account five, fifty oh one under salaries to pay for the two staff members. Increase payroll taxes FICA by six hundred and seventy-five dollars, which is Department Sixty account five one oh one. And then increase special events and program costs by five hundred dollars in Department Sixty account six nine oh one to, so we can fund the after-school program this year.
Terrific. Any questions for staff related to this item? No, no, sir. No, ma'am? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to affect the budget transfer as described?
I'll make a motion. I'm sorry, what verb did you use, Mr. President?
To affect the budget transfer.
I'll make a motion to affect the budget transfer as described.
Thank you. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second that.
The motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz. It's been seconded by Commissioner Buckman. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody against, please say nay. The motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Sweeney absent. Very good. We now turn to our second agenda item. Mr.?
Mr. President, we got a call from Boys and Girls Club. They, they'd like to try it again, but the main thing is, we, we want to settle this thing down for the long term and we, Irma, she was not going to come back. She was going to come back, her assistant, and we've gotten a commitment for her for maybe two years. But we are going to listen to what Boys and Girls Club proposes this time because they really like to be up here and they have a terrific program. And also I found out through Mr. Hind with Woodsboro Bank that the YMCA has some programs that they're looking to do something up here. So the, the main thing is to answer, put to bed, and it's a, it's a long-term commitment from these people and, and it's, but thank you for accommodating this request because we are relying on, we thought, Boys and Girls Club. And then we've got Irma back in the action to run it this year, maybe next year.
Great, okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
We turn to agenda item number two, the electric vehicle parking ordinance for consideration.
As directed by the Board of Commissioners at a previous meeting related to the installation of the four charging stations to the rear of the parking lot, town staff was directed to construct an ordinance that would guideline how parking is, is to be done at the electric charging stations. So town staff, myself and Miss Nail did a lot of research and put the ordinance together. John Clapp reviewed it, made, made his own legal changes, and so the ordinance has been reviewed by John and I'll just kind of highlight the areas. We added the section under ten point one two, stopping, standing, and parking. The section's going to be entitled Reserve Parking for Recharging Plug-In Electric Drive Vehicles. Basically, it states the letter A, any parking space with an electric charging station used for charging plug-in electric vehicles must have signage indicating that the space is for the exclusive use of your plug-in electric drive vehicles. Only plug-in electric drive vehicles may park in such parking spaces. The use is on a first-come, first-served basis. All vehicles parked in a space reserved for plug-in electric drive vehicle charging must be connected to and using the charging equipment to charge the vehicle. You can't just park there. No plug-in vehicles may be parked in a charging space at any time between the hours of ten PM and six AM, except for the town of Emmitsburg fleet vehicle. Maximum, maximum charging time is six hours and that's what the, the specs are on the charging stations. Again, you can't be parked there for any longer than six hours. And the owner of any vehicle in violation of this ordinance may be issued a citation and shall be subject to a ten-dollar fine for each day of violation. In addition, the vehicle in violation of this ordinance may be towed at the owner's expense. That's the end of the ordinance.
Any questions for staff related to this item? Mr. Blanchard, yes, sir.
How many, how many spots do we have? How many, I'm sorry.
Four.
Four, four, okay.
And just to note, we changed in the location, correct? No, we just moved the dumpster.
Next to the dumpster?
We're waiting on right-ofways from the county.
Yeah, which we should have either today or tomorrow.
Moving forward.
Just a follow-up. I should have brought this up to the administrative business. Imagine the town is aware of the alarm going off by the dumpster, the, what's the, our.
Generator.
Generator, is like almost a weekly basis.
They were out to look at it. If you recall, in the budget and fund two, we set aside money for repairs for the generator.
Apologize for that. I meant to bring it up to the administrative business, but we're on the spot when you said that, I'm like. It just came back to me. I was like, all right. Sorry.
No, I, you've, I have a whole bunch of questions related to that, but I'll hold off. No, I, you've, I have a whole bunch of questions related to that, but I'll hold off for now, but you've brought up a good point. Oh, go ahead, yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner Buckman, sorry.
With, in light of like the vandalism in the bathroom, how do, is there like, I know we have a camera that goes to the, the community park. Is it possible to get a camera on the station?
We are working with updating our security system here, we do have cameras in the building. There's been discussion of adding some outside, the lighting. It's a possibility, yes, we certainly wouldn't want them vandalized.
Right.
Yeah, very much, that's a concern. Okay.
I'm good, that's all, only question I have.
Mr. Ritz, any questions?
No.
No. For solar expenses, do we gain any advantage from this, related to use of the solar field? And for our green and the sustainable community piece, do we get points out of this, so to speak?
Green team leader, that's...
Sorry. Okay, and does it, does it help our budget related to our paying for part of this, one of the solar fields?
This is, we're doing something with the...
New territory?
With the county.
Yeah, we have not, we will be, the, the, charging stations will have their own electric account that will be billed to the town directly. What we'll need to do is just to see what the usage is, to see if it's beneficial to have it added to a solar field. It, it depends on its usage, on how many kilowatts are used an hour, to see if it's, if it's beneficial.
Okay.
And if it is, then we can certainly reach out and try to add it.
And do we anticipate any electric vehicles in the town's future for our staff?
Yes, and I actually added that to this fiscal year nineteen's budget for the town car. Not our trucks, but the town car, we are just waiting to make sure that we actually get the stations, and then once we get the stations, we're gonna look to purchase an, an electric vehicle, as a town car.
Okay, and when you say town car, not Lincoln Town Car, but a town-used car?
No, no, we're looking at it like, like a hatchback.
I don't want the mayor to get too, never mind. Okay, no, sorry. All right, moving forward, therefore.
You can have a little weekend.
Yeah, right, rocking the Nissan Leaf. Okay, so are there any other questions related to this item? Okay, therefore, is there a, a motion to accept this as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance number eighteen dash eleven as presented.
Very good, is there a second for the motion?
I second a motion, please.
Okay, the motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz and seconded by Commissioner Blanchard, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? No? Okay, so the motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Sweeney absent. Okay, we now turn to the third agenda item, related to the policy for employee vacation buyback for our consideration.
Correct, as you recall, we've had several discussions at previous town meetings of how we can reduce the amount of payout at the end of separation of employment. You recently passed a resolution to set aside roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a reserve fund for basically benefits that are paid out at the time a person separates from employment, as long as they're, they are eligible. So, for example, Ms. Cipperly, she will be paid out her benefits this coming week, the money will be pooled from that reserve fund. And so in discussions with our human relations expert, and discussions with the board, and discussions amongst the staff, how can we better prepare for some of these expenses? And one of the things that we had talked about is offering people to buy back now some of their vacation time, which then eliminates or will lower the amount that is paid out at the time they separate their employment and possibly paid out at a lower rate if they continue to, to be eligible for their steps. And as we've encountered, there's times when employees have emergency situations where they may need medical, legal expenses, family, personal issues, that they may need additional money, and this is something that the town, it's kind of a win-win, we can help our employees and also help our town financially. So I had Amanda, our HR person, draft a policy, basically entitled your vacation buyout, and I'll just go through it briefly. The town recognizes that employees need time away from the job for rest and relaxation, we encourage you to take your earned time off from work. However, we also understand that sometimes vacation is not an option, so we are offering an alternative vacation buyback program. A vacation buyback plan is a program that allows an employee to sell his or her unused vacation time back to the town. It's a common practice in many organizations, and it allows the employees to profit from unused vacation days. And as I mentioned, it also will help the town in the long run. The parameters of it are essentially, you're not eligible until you have one year of service. Employees are eligible to cash out their excess vacation time. Leave balances in, in excess of forty hours may be cashed out, up to a maximum of two hundred and sixty hours per calendar year. So you can't just say, hey, I want a day here, or I want a day here, it's gotta be a week or more. Eligible employees are required to notify the town manager of the requested number of hours to cash out. If it is approved, the benefit will be paid out in the next regular pay cycle. The town reserves the right to deny any request at any time for any reason. Keep an eye on the budget, keep an eye, an eye on the amount that we have set aside. Just to reiterate what the handbook says, for hires prior to twenty sixteen, there's no cap on the amount of accrued and unused leave that can be carried from one year. However, any hire after December first, twenty sixteen, there is a cap of vacation time, you can carry up to three hundred hours. And this policy only applies to vacation time, you cannot cash out your sick leave or your personal days. And that's the policy, on the back of the policy is what would be considered a draft agreement. And basically, it says, it's an employee agreement between the employee and the town. The, this agreement for vacation buyback is entered into by the name of the, into, with the town of Emmitsburg and what the employee is, the employee has requested, how many hours do they want? They get compensated at their current rate of pay, they do understand that taxes and withholdings are held, withheld from their benefit. And basically, it's agreement to, so all parties are involved, it would be put, they'd get a copy and it's put in their personnel file.
Okay, any questions for staff related to this item?
Just really quickly, only because, and I don't even know why I'm thinking about it. So if someone accrued vacation time from two thousand sixteen, and their pay was significantly less, they would cash out at the current pay, is that what you're...
So say if I wanted to cash out my forty hours of vacation, I, I would cash out at this pay rate. But I don't plan to retire for X number of years, say, six, eight years. My pay rate would, would be going up each year, so yes, you're cashing out at what, at lesser amount than what you would if you held on to it, to, to the time that you separate. The twenty sixteen comes in, you, as a board, passed in twenty sixteen that we put a cap on how many vacation hours new employees could, could accrue in an effort to manage our payouts. That's where the year twenty sixteen comes in.
Approximately how many staff, those prior to December first, twenty sixteen, it's about, what, seventy-five percent of staff, you'd say?
Yes, we have only two after the December first, twenty sixteen. Ms. Shaw and Mr. Goulden, two new employees.
Oh, okay, wow, time flies, okay.
So for the approval process, I'm looking on the back, I see town manager, supervisor, and the employee who's making the request. If town manager applies for this, where does it fall then, dare I ask? To the mayor?
To the mayor.
Okay.
But she won't. I know. No, and that's a good question, that is a good question. And, you know, the mayor can sign for all financial things, so he could sign if it was for me, or for the next town manager.
Okay, and related to fiscal concerns, for example, worst-case scenario, fiscal crisis in the community, the entire water line collapses, and now we're putting our reserves toward that, something akin to that. Is the town obligated to meet this expense?
No, and it's written in there that we can deny it for any reason.
Okay, but that's the nature of that term, that, that phrasing, any reason falls there?
Yes.
All right, so there's not a compulsion on this? Okay.
It's not a given, you're not, it's not an automatic thing that you're guaranteed.
Okay, all right.
Because you don't know what the financial situation could be five years from now.
Exactly, okay, all right, this, I hate to play, you know, widows and orphans on the, on the discussion here, but, you know, one must be conservative. Okay, all right, any other questions for staff related to this item? Okay. Hearing none, okay, therefore, is there a motion to accept this policy as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the policy as written.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there a second for the commissioner's motion?
I'll second.
Okay, the commission, I'm sorry, the, the motion was made by Commissioner Blanchard, it was seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. The motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Sweeney absent. Okay, so we now turn toward setting the agenda, oh, for clarity's sake, we did have a additional, an additional agenda item, the charter amendment updates for consideration. Staff moved to have that postponed to a future meeting, so we do not have that at this meeting. And now we turn to setting the agenda for our next town meeting.
I would like to put on the agenda for the next meeting to reappoint Mark Walker to the Citizens Advisory Committee, and also to, Brian and Melissa McKinney would also like to join the Citizens Advisory Committee, like to put that on the agenda.
Okay, do we wanna do that as consent agenda, or do we wanna have discussion? I would think consent would be appropriate. Are you satisfied with that for those three individuals, very good? Okay, and spellings of names could go to staff, just so we have everybody.
I already have that.
Terrific, great, okay. Anything else?
I do, I have several items. First item being the approval of the election judges for the upcoming election. We have, the Citizens Advisory Committee's been working on, we have a welcome letter for new residents for discussion and possible consideration. For consideration, the sewer relining project on East Main Street. The authorization to proceed with solicitation of federal funding for a new pumping station for discussion and consideration. USDA's come out with some additional funding opportunities that we would like to pursue, and we've already had, Michelle and I have had some conference calls with USDA already.
So for clarity's sake, the fourth item you're proposing would potentially help us address the wild water?
Both number three and number four will significantly impact your wild water and your INI.
Okay, and fifth item would be...
Fifth item is the tax amendment related to Mr. Baldicino. The wording for that will be consideration of the recommendation of the town's planning commission to rezone lots ten, eleven, fifteen, and the western half of Lot Twelve from low-density residential to neighborhood commercial. And that's for considerate, I already said for consideration.
Right, okay. Any other items for administrative business before we...
I do not.
Bring this to the board. Okay, any other items for the administrative business, staff, from the board, rather?
I, I have an item for discussing what we just...
Yes, sir.
Do we need to vote on the agenda first? I, I would like to discuss a reorder of numbers, potentially.
Okay.
Oh boy, I'm sorry.
Reorder of numbers, like, sequence of...
Approval of election judges, number one, that goes fairly quickly. Out of consideration for Mr. and Mrs. Baldicino, potentially moving number five to number two now.
Okay.
For, for next time.
All right.
I mean, we'd love to have you for the whole meeting, but it's a long drive back to Bowie, you know, just, just...
And who wouldn't wanna be here for a whole meeting, okay? Okay, so let's do this, then, we'll take this in two parts, we have the consent agenda, we have the next business, sorry, we have the next meeting agenda items. So we'll take those in two parts with a motion for each. Anybody have any concerns about that? Okay, so is there a motion to accept the agenda as modified?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as modified.
Thank you, is there a second for the motion?
I'll give a second.
Very good, the motion's made by Commissioner Buckman, seconded by Commissioner Blanchard, is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, the motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Sweeney absent. And for the consent agenda, is there a motion to accept the consent, the consent agenda as proposed?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as proposed.
Very good, thank you, sir, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second, sorry.
Thank you, sir, the motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz and it's been seconded by Commissioner Blanchard, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Sweeney absent. Okay, and I believe at this point in time, with no other comment to hear, we conclude our meeting. The meeting concludes at nine seventeen PM. Good evening.